Glad to see all these people in person tonight, it's awesome.
You need to travel back.
There's still a spot saved, look at all these months and weeks.
We're saving a spot.
Good to be here.
That's how much we, that's how much we value it.
Not just on the screen there.
Thank you, it's seven o'clock and we do have a quorum with all Board of Supervisors members here. I think as many guests in person tonight, which we're glad about. We'll go ahead and get started then with an invitation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. God, thank you for allowing us all to be here tonight to do the county's business. Please be with all those tonight who are impacted by the storms. Get everyone safe in their travels home and about. We've asked for your continued blessing on the country as we recover from the pandemic. For those who are specifically ailing as well as financial and other impacts across the country and specifically here in Amelia. Please be with all of us tonight, grant us wisdom and to have, to guide us through decisions for Amelia's citizens. Amen.
Of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we move into the remainder of our agenda, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an informational on an event coming to Amelia.
All right, thank you. We'll put that right, we'll slot that right between nine and 10 on there if you're okay with that. All right, and then we'll just make an adjustment in the order, which you already mentioned. So you have some guests, we'll bring the BML Baco presentation up earlier in the agenda following the B and B presentation. And respect our guest's time, so. All right, with those, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Good, all right, all those in favors, one sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, we'll move forward with that agenda. All right, and first off, we do have B and B consultants and welcome all three of you coming tonight.
Good evening.
Thank you.
For having us. We have tonight the final report for the Highway 360 East Water and Sewer Utilities. And we've prepared a presentation to kind of hit some, hit the highlights, basically. There's a lot, obviously, to digest in those reports.
You want to sit here and do this or do you want the quicker?
This is what we're.
Yeah, all right, go right in. It's down in the bottom right corner.
Both of y'all will slide that way a little bit more, that way the people who are watching can actually see Sam talk.
Okay, not gonna do all the talking.
All right. Come back a little more.
There you go, you're on there.
Okay, all right, go ahead, I'll take care of it from there.
So first thing I want to do is discuss the project scope. So we were tasked to evaluate the best alternatives to extend water and sewer infrastructure along Highway 360 East as a village shopping center where water and sewer currently ends. Part of that, we were also asked to evaluate alternatives to expand the existing wastewater treatment, treatment plant versus building a new wastewater treatment, knowing that how we deal with the sewer is going to be a big concern as to which ways we go. So that's a lot of what this report focuses on. Then after some preliminary discussions, the meetings we've had, the Board of Supervisors requested to focus more on utilities in the vicinity of Butler's Road. So even though we've given you options to go down 360 to Military Road, we also have options to stop around Butler's Road with water going to Chula Road. And Board of Supervisors preference to not construct infrastructure that would not be utilized during future phases. So taking those things into mind is how we prepared this report. So our study area, just taking the county's comprehensive plan here. We know that the intent of this project was to help get water and sewer to these areas identified in the comprehensive plan for their development. So highlighted in green here is what our study focuses on, getting water and sewer to. I'll tell you now, in the maps, we talk about Winterham South being this area, Winterham North being this area, and then everything east of that is Highway 360 East. The first thing, it's a little out of order of the reports you received, but I think it's appropriate. We'll talk about the water because that's the least of concerns and we'll get that out of the way. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Randy.
Thanks, Sam. Oh, what we, I wanted to make everybody aware of, in the report, the report is going to discuss that your well capacity, you have sufficient well capacity for future growth, even if you should lose a well. And you have two other wells that are available that haven't been put online. You also have an elevated tank that is sufficient in capacity, but you don't have redundancy as you do with your well. And some of y'all with the board have remembered when we had issued a few months ago that we had to do maintenance on the 500 gallon elevated tank. And we ran into a lot of issues, a lot of high costs in trying to figure out how we can take that tank offline for maintenance. And one of the things we ended up doing, obviously, we used GVC tank, which was 100,000 gallon elevated tank. That got us by, but the thing that I want everybody to remember, that tank is a lot small, low in elevation. So we had less pressure for those, for the distribution system from what it was experienced. Also, it's 100,000 gallons volume versus 500,000. We were able to renovate that tank and put it online and along with the operations of the wells, which were probably put a lot undue stress, but they were running, continuing to help maintain pressure in the system as well as that storage in the elevated tank. We were able to meet your domestic demand. But we had concerns about the fire demand. We were fortunate in the 45 days, six days, that we didn't carry any fire. But we had to put on alert the fire departments, adjacent fire departments, if such a situation. We tried to do this job where within the hot part of the summer, everybody was trying to use water for watering the lawns and washing cars and stuff. But that's a very, very critical, if we had a serious fire, we could have been in a critical situation. And even though the tank has been painted now and coated interior and you used to go about 10 years period with not having to take it back or to serve it. It ought to be thought about that we need to look in the next five years or so trying to get another tank in redundancy. And we're looking about over the north of Winterham area. That would help, so if something happened, you had to take the other tanker to serve for maintenance, whatever, you have redundancy to help service the system. Another thing to be aware of, the water system and plus extending this, we don't really have a lot of loop system in this water distribution. So we should have a line break, say between this area we're looking at expanding and just an elevated tank. You're not going to have water there. And so if we get a redundancy, put a tank over on this side here and had a break, we could isolate the break area, repair that breaker, hopefully we wouldn't have many people out of water, but you can serve the other area by the two tanks. And again, as I stated, with standard water system out for your future looking at growth for commercial and stuff, as we develop Winterham and stuff, we ought to try to look at too, in the future, trying to do some loop system to help we had to move water around, should you have a main break in the line and you can distribute the water elsewhere. But that's, I wanted you to be aware, know when you read the report, you're going to think, okay, we're good, we're good for a while. I still think the town would be better off and have a lot of headaches taken off their plate if they can look at getting that redundancy tank installed. And again, we're looking at another 500,000 gallon tank at the same elevation so that it can, they both flow on the system with each other.
There's loops you're talking about, are they included in the?
No, they're not, they're not. There'll be small lines that you'll just go around a lot of the development, residential and stuff like that to just help move water around, and you know, we're talking maybe six, eight, 10, you know, it wouldn't be a large line, but multi-loop to help move the water around.
You know, as the development develops around it, you can develop loops as the development occurs.
Okay, did that have to be an upfront cost?
So you're saying if we develop off the main trunk, instead of going in branches, we go in loops?
Yeah, you can, if it's like a horse you want to, you can go around one way and tie into the 360 line, tie in another way. But just plan on looping it as development, those you get the developers to hopefully to pay for.
Some of this, we just want to bring some concerns to you, with this, just like the elevated tank. You know, we made it by with the GVC tank, but we're putting this new infrastructure in to get more customers. Just be leery, be cautious of the customers that connect. They might not be able to be satisfied by the GVC tank when it comes time for maintenance of that again, so. Well, it's not needed right now, the 500,000 gallon second tank, the light on the time, so just keep that in the back of your mind. And then, we broke this down, as I mentioned before, first water line phase, the Chula Road, $2.7 million. And then if want to extend that to Military Road, $1.5 million is the total project cost, not just construction, engineering easements and all. So then throughout this presentation, that's what we have listed our total project cost for those pieces. Any questions on the water?
Yes. If you were to run water down 360 and sewer down 360, do they go in the same trench?
No, not at all.
Never? They have to dig it up twice no matter what?
Oh, yeah.
They have to have a 10-foot separation.
Okay.
Well, your water line's doing this and your gravity lines are constantly going hell. But even if you got a force main that can send it back, yeah, you have to have 10-foot separation. Yeah, so no, they would never go in the same trench. All right, if, no more questions on water extension, you know, we didn't stop it at Butler's Road because I know you guys were interested in the Butler's Road area, so that's why we went ahead and just continued all the Chula. So, and if, from this, if you decide, well, 2.7 is too much, but we want to do something, we can certainly look at cutting it back to whatever you want to do. The next thing before we get, is to talk about the sewer. And before we get into that, I want Mac Bug to discuss a little bit about the BPDS permit, the sewage treatment plant's discharge permit. Explain some of that, our existing permit at the plant and how a new permit at a new treatment plant, how that, that's, that changes, how that varies, so. Mac, if you don't mind?
Is it all right to stand up? In 2005, some legislature was formed called the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Neutric Exchange Program. And Amelia County is lucky enough to be in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. But luckily, you already had a sewage treatment plant at that point. So on the smaller plants like Amelia, DEQ did not make them upgrade to meet the new standards at that time. What they did, they gave you credits for what you couldn't remove. For example, for your 300,000 gallon day treatment plant, they gave you nitrogen credits of almost, I think it was like 20, 17, almost 17,300 pounds a year of nitrogen. That's credits they gave you. Phosphorus, it was like almost 2,300 pounds per year of phosphorus. But they don't make you test for what, they just said, we're going to give you that much allocation. And this legislation also said, all expanded treatment plants, new treatment plants, you can't put, you can only put zero nitrogen phosphorus in the stream with bad credits. But you got credits. So, and the legislature said, all these new plants, expanded plants have to remove the total nitrogen down to three milligrams per liter, annual average. Phosphorus down to .3 milligrams per liter. And we tested your influence and the test results showed that your incoming phosphorus is close to nine milligrams per liter. So you'd have to go from nine milligrams per liter coming in to .3 annually going out. And nitrogen, the test showed that you have 50-plus, plus milligrams per liter nitrogen coming in. And you'd have to drop it down to three milligrams per liter. And that's expensive to do that. Along about that time, the county was having a lot of development pressure, 2005, 2007. And so the county wanted to, we did a master water and sewer plan at that time to try to serve these developers. And we had a, the county obtained a new discharge permit on Smacks Creek that you probably know about. And that was a tier permit, one, the first tier was right at a million gallons. We call it 199 because we didn't want to have to test more frequently. And then a two million gallon plant tier and a three million gallon tier. And the county hired a law firm, Aqua Law, attorney by the name of Dick Sedgley, to help the county determine how to use that, utilize that new permit. And what, with the engineers and Mr. Sedgley, it was determined the best thing to do was abandon the existing plant, put in the new plant, abandon the existing plant and use the credits you have. You don't have to give the credits on the existing plant. You can use, you can sell it, what you don't use, you can sell annually. So based on that experience, well, there's another reason for doing that, to abandon the plant. These limits are so stringent, we use bacteria to remove the organics in sewage, the phosphorus in sewage, the nitrogen. Your plant was not designed to remove nitrogen, it was not designed to remove phosphorus. And we use bacteria to do it, and we had to keep those bacteria happy. So if we design a plant for 300,000 like yours, to make it work, we need close to 150,000 gallons to make those bugs happy and work, you see what I'm saying? So you can't put in a new plant with no flow going to it and make it work unless you want to buy a lot of synthetic food and put it in. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to operate two plants in that situation. So that's the pluckst of the problem. Any questions about permitting, you know, those limits, and that's not, that's not the only limit. Ammonia limit is not part of Chesapeake Bay program, watershed program. Ammonia is site specific, wherever you discharge. And ammonia limits at your plant, your 300,000 plant for average during the summertime, ammonia limit is 1.5 milligrams per liter. If we were to double that, your capacity to 600,000 at the existing plant site, the limits may drop down to .75 milligrams per liter. And that's difficult, I mean, it's not impossible, but you got to have good operators. Your iron I could mess you up, you've got a lot of iron I, it'll wash the bacteria down the stream, you know? And it takes 30 to 60 days for them to grow back, so you're in violation. So everything has got to be, the design has to be right, operation has to be right and flow has to be right, you know, you don't want high flows washing the bugs down the stream. Ammonia is a big concern for us and DEQ has told us that the best, the most lenient ammonia limits we could have anywhere in the county would be in the Appomattox River. So keep that in mind. If you have to answer any question.
So based on that, we developed this report with two essential options. How much can we expand the existing treatment plant? And then building a new plant and closing the existing plant, pumping to it. So the first option I want to discuss is expanding the existing treatment plant. So after reviewing and studying this, knowing that we have the nitrogen and phosphorus requirements for everything over our existing amount, .3 MGD. The plant cost to upgrade this, $9.9 million total project cost. The pros for this, it allows for the infrastructure along Highway 360 to be installed now and this could be put on hold some until the demand increases. So if you're not ready to chew off everything in one bite, that's a step that you can do. The current flow to the plant's around 100,000 gallons a day. But as Mac mentioned, you do have some high iron I that's inflow and infiltration, basically rainwater getting into the sewer, coming to the plant. And that, that should be dealt with, that should be addressed. You know, the county should always be working on trying to reduce that as much as possible. I know, I know, I'm talking with Daryl that the guys do some, and I think, actually, we do some more recently. But that's an ongoing thing, battle.
Yes, could I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
As soon as we've done in the past, looking at your existing flows, if you don't remove any iron I, we think you could add 100,000 gallon of flow management to the plant. So, you know, if you remove iron I, then you can add more than 100,000 gallons of flow.
Everybody follow that? About 100,000 gallons been eaten up by rainwater. Continuing with the pros, this is the least cost alternative and it also utilizes your existing capital improvements of expanding on the plant that's here. The cons, though, there's insufficient room to practically expand beyond .6 MGD. So that's the most we can really do at this location. And stricter discharge limits for ammonia versus discharging to the Appomattox River. I don't know if I'd let that be a decision maker in which way you go, but clearly the, how far do you see down the road going beyond .6 MGD is really what I think is the decision maker here.
So the expansion of this plant still doesn't make it any more efficient, correct?
It does, yeah. Well, we can't increase the amount of phosphorus and nitrogen we discharge. So if we have more coming to the plant, we have to remove more. So that, it's more efficient, if that's what you, if you're asking.
And he has a process, the process, and isn't any more efficient for removing?
It is.
It is.
Yes.
Yeah. So what I hear is you're not just building more here, you're actually changing the process.
Yeah.
Different technology.
You've got to remove the phosphorus down to .3 and the nitrogen down to 3.
This isn't more plant, this is a more efficient plant. The flow still comes in the same way, it still goes through these same ditches.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, all right, we've added the.
You're not increasing the throughput as much as you're changing, you're adding steps to it to make it more efficient.
Yes, in series, in line.
Gotcha.
Exactly. Any questions on the existing plant?
I have one relative to what you were saying, but I didn't know you were going to stop and jump to this. You mentioned we could sell these credits, have we been doing that?
No, not as of right now.
Okay.
Is there a demand for them? I'm pretty sure there is.
Something we need to look at.
If anybody puts in a new treatment plant, they got to have credit to go from three milligrams of nitrogen down to zero. They got to have credit for that. Phosphorus, they got to have credit for three.
Can we sell them only while we're not using them and then take them back?
It's my understanding that you can sell them annually.
Okay.
Might want to talk to your attorney, but that's my understanding, it's an annual sale. Don't, you're not committing beyond 12 months.
I should have said before I started here, I want to talk about the two, the existing plant expansion and the new treatment plant before we get into the sewer collection and conveyance systems, just so you have the plants in mind when we're reviewing those. So the next plant expansion, not expansion, I'm sorry. The next option is we, new .6 MGD wastewater treatment plant that discharges to the, directly to the Appomattox River. I say on the Appomattox, but discharged to the Appomattox as close as possible. That, just for, by comparison, that wastewater treatment plant costs $15.1 million. But as we discussed, you can't, we don't recommend doing this plant unless you also close the existing plant and pump it over. That system is about $9.5 billion for a total of $24.6 million.
$9.5 million to close it?
To close it, this is a brief summary there, to close it, pump it and the conveyance system to get over there, not just to close it.
Okay.
So I only had a limited amount of space on the screen.
I would guess the majority of that is the.
Oh, yes.
The conveyance, okay.
Yeah, that's about $200,000 is what we put in the budget to close the plant. That just consists of filling in the lagoons. And there is some benefit to this because that extends some utilities along 360 that you want to accomplish. So it's not just entirely, and we'll get into more of that a little bit, it's not just entirely to close the plant and pump it over. Pros of this, it allows room for future expansion. You know, we've just shown here additional .6 MGD expansion and a third .6 MGD expansions. You basically would do these things in equal sizes, so they're like parallel trains running together. Cons, it's the highest cost alternative and must close the existing wastewater treatment plant.
But keep in mind, your existing plant, you already got years for 300,000, 600,000, this is a whole new train.
Yeah, and you mentioned that our current plant is not designed to get rid of all these things, is this one?
Yes.
It's much more, it's much better at it?
Yeah.
Different technology?
Yes, has to be.
But your existing plant, we had to start doing.
Yeah. But this one is designed from the beginning to be efficient, getting rid of those things.
I continue to get stuck on the, why we say we, to do this, you have to close the other one. I just don't, like, I don't know why that's a hard hit.
The one thing you got to have sewage to operate at this point, it won't operate if you don't have sewage.
All right, so you need enough volume.
To feed the bacteria, they'll die if you don't feed them.
There's several factors into why we're saying recommend versus must, I know I listen must here, but there's, there's cost if you put in a new plant here and you can't use the credits at your other plant. There's much more added cost than that, there's much more added cost than operating two plants, you'll still have to do some upgrades.
All right, the difference of recommend for lots of reasons versus must, that makes a world of difference to me, okay? I was missing what the like forcing mechanism is. Must, that, that makes a world of difference to me. Okay, I was missing what the like forcing mechanism is, but you're saying it just doesn't make sense.
Exactly.
Yeah, that, I guess.
I'm glad you asked.
I, I understand that better than, okay.
Sam, can I say, we looked at another process for the new plant too. And it's like a million, three, four. And it may have more insurances than this one. When we get, if you choose to go that way, we might take the stay ahead and simplify it. We might go look above and together make that decision.
I assume there's just new technology coming all the time is part of what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't listen to the report. Yeah, that plant's about sixteen point four million dollars. But, yeah, so if, if like Mac said, if you, you want to move in the direction of a new plant, we'll discuss that more with y'all. All right, so after discussing the plants now, um, the next thing we have are the sewer infrastructure extension options. And the first thing we have is if we were going to send it back to the existing wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the service to areas that, um, you know, identified along three sixty, um, around Butler's Road. And then further east, um, this, this stops shy of Military Road, just off the page here. This is broken up into three different major drainage divides. Uh, Winterham North, Winterham South, and what we call Highway three sixty East. And these are three different pump stations to convey wastewater back to the existing plants. The primary one being this Winterham South, uh, area. The total project cost for that, for the gravity sewer pump station in Forest Main, six point two million dollars. That includes upgrades at Volo Pump Station that this pumps into, so that we can pump, uh, handle this additional flow. I say this is the primary because if you see the, I apologize, I should explain this a little bit more. Blue are the gravity lines and red is the, the force main from the pump stations. As you see, the Winterham North and Highway three sixty pump into this gravity system where it's then pumped again over to here. Winterham North, that was identified, uh, in the comprehensive plan, I believe, as economical development. Somewhat like an industrial park area, that two point six million dollars. Uh, and then Highway three sixty East, four point eight million dollars. One of the things that, uh, we don't like about this layout here is the long runs. It will take to the service utilities up here. Um, if, if, if you want to go further down the road with this option, but maybe not ready to bite off the whole four point eight million dollars or something. If, if we can identify some areas, he, you know, maybe here, we might be able to do like a gravity sewer and um. I'm sorry, I'm thinking about on the new plant a little bit, uh. Yeah, sometimes I'm getting ahead of myself. Yeah, so, any questions on? This existing option here, uh, sewer service area going back to the existing plant?
Okay. We would hope that if you put these basic infrastructure in, then you can make developers pay for the infrastructure to come to yours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a good point. I'm glad you mentioned that, Matt. The area highlighted in green, these are undeveloped parcels, uh, that can be serviced by the, these pump stations. Now, it doesn't mean that there's sewer extended to every one of the parcels like these, for example. It just means that it's capable of gravity flowing from this area into this pump station. And we highlighted the undeveloped areas, so you can see what's the potential, what do you want to, uh, put this in for? Because if you, you look, most of what is developed are residential areas. And they already, they're already on drain fields, um, they don't, they don't need sewer. So we're just kind of looking at those, eliminating those, but there's no, 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 no purpose to extend sewer to, to these areas. Um, so. And this is the same map with just a USGS background, in case if you wanted to see the topography of how that laid, I apologize, put a green on green. Now, if we were to put in a new plant, uh, this is how we would propose to provide sewer service to the same areas. Uh, going to a new plant towards the east here, towards Appomattox. You notice, I, I note that this is the end of the study until wastewater treatment site is selected. So we bring, this is Military Road right here, we're bringing sewer to this point. Um, from here, depending on wherever the treatment plant goes, uh, we'll, we may be able to continue it in gravity, we may need another pump station. Don't know. That's, that's something we'll have to, um, work through that process with y'all. So the Winterham South Pump Station, uh, area now, uh, that's not, uh, the primary area. It just needs to serve itself, and then as you see, it pumps over now into the Highway three sixty East Pump Station. The winter, um, a little bit out of order here, and I'm sorry, I didn't discuss the courthouse branch. Well, let me just finish with my thought. The Winterham South Pump Station area, that costs now three point seven million dollars. And the Winterham North Pump Station, that pumps up into the same courthouse branch, Forest Main. Um. Two point three million dollars. And then Highway three sixty East area and pump station that would pump up into the gravity sewer here, four million dollars. And that what I should have started with, I apologize for being out of order, I get a little scattered sometimes. The courthouse branch, nine point four million dollars. So to close the existing wastewater treatment plant, we need to put in a pump station and a force main. Fairly long run, as you can see. But we get up to this point here, and at that point, we can gravity flow to the Appomattox. So included in that nine point four million dollars is all this gravity sewer that can service this side. Uh, the north side of Highway three sixty.
So that's the same nine point four earlier.
Yes.
Referring to as close the plant.
Correct.
Where it really is not so much closing, but actually does all this.
That allows us to close this.
That's, okay.
Yeah, and it's much clearer in the report. I just summarized.
Actually, I'm just confirming, yeah, that was good.
Uh, and this is what I was talking about before, if you're not ready to, um, say, you, you want to do this option, but it's, you can't do it all. Uh, there's ways, we, we feel like we can gravity sewer along, uh, three sixty enough here to do like one acre developments. You know, like some fast foods or, or, um, convenience centers and such, and still be able to come under the highway and tie into the gravity sewer. So there's still potential to develop, uh, on the south side of three sixty as well, once this is in. Um, the only thing is this pump station, we'll need to extend that force main a little bit further to get it up here. And we may be able to tie it into this one, depends on the head, um, how much this, this force main that's already taking. So going with this option. If closing the courthouse branch, putting in the gravity sewer and a new plant will get you sewer automatically on the north side of Highway three sixty here. And some on the south side. Excuse me. And then. You know, if you find that you're not ready to do these areas, you know, we could look at something, if you had something smaller, uh, we could do. What we're trying to avoid is having multiple pump stations, and we already have three now. If you start getting more than that and they all start to come on at the same time, we can really risk overloading the downstream sewer. Or we end up spending a lot more money oversizing the downstream sewer for that. Any questions?
What was the, remind me from the previous slide, what was the cost of the new treatment center?
It's around fifteen million.
Thank you.
Yes, fifteen million. I have the same slide with the USGS background. And that is it. Any questions?
The, the report has details on what your, we estimate your annual revenue, sewer revenue requirement would be.
Yes.
Power costs, labor costs.
Yeah.
Debt service, debt service reserves, all of that in the report.
Yeah, good point, Matt. Yeah, yeah, we're just broken down into the project cost here, but yeah, all that's also itemized in there, so you can see annually what you need for each item. Pay attention to, to, to some of the things, it'll be noted like, in order to do this, you must also do this. Uh, but we wanted to try to make it as, uh. Piecemeal as you can, so you can pick and choose, you know, your, uh. Focus of interest. I hope we have. Done it as you were expecting with the areas, you know, what, what you want to serve.
Yep, there was all the options.
Yeah. And, uh, as I mentioned, if you get into it and you, it's, it's, it's a lot, you know, th- these are some big areas to cover, there's no doubt. Um, if you decide, you know, you still want to do something, uh, you know, we, we can, we can scale back. We just, you know, need to know where to focus.
Go back two slides, I just wanna, I, I know I can get it later, I just wanna repair it for myself now to the, those numbers and, uh.
This one.
Go forward one. Now, that, that one, but. And then that didn't include the cost of upgrading the existing.
Correct.
What was the cost of the upgrading the existing?
That was around nine million.
That's right, okay, thank you, that's what I.
Yeah, nine point nine, thank you.
If you do the new treatment plant and all those sewer alternatives, we can look at what, thirty million dollars, something like that.
Well, that, yeah, I was giving thirty four, but I did, but I mean, yeah. And, yeah, that's, well, that's kind of where I was going, but to upgrade the existing and then to, and to expand what it could. Which is not the same amount of expenditure, but only what it could cover, it's still twenty two point six. I mean, they end up not being worlds apart in price, but you're just getting so much more coverage with the new, with the new plant. Instead of upgrading something that then, once you upgrade the existing, you're, you're, that's sunk money because you're not gonna be able to grow any from there at all.
And you get instead of the art technology.
Yeah, I, I'm understanding more and more your must, I, I, it's, as I add the numbers up, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
You got it.
Okay, I just need some time to process it, okay.
I was saying, I was gonna say, you know, if you use the existing plant, then you got all your three sixty going in one direction, towards the existing. And then when you run out of capacity, then you gotta figure out a way to reverse it, you know, the other.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot of that. Yeah.
All right, oh. Any other questions? Well, that, that's all we have. Would you like us to stick around for a little bit?
Um, do you have something on the stuff we're gonna discuss in close session for us to review?
Um, all I have is the presentation I brought, um, but I can.
Like, I'll, I'll.
It's different than that, yeah. Um, I can send it to you, you can have it tomorrow morning.
That's all right. I mean, I personally, I'd like to see it before we see the presentation, just so I have some time to read it. Dig into it.
I'll get somebody to print it off. I thought we weren't gonna.
We're not gonna do it tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, if we do it next week or whenever the next.
That's fine, I'll, I'll send it to y'all tonight, I mean tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
That's not the problem. Yeah, let's, let's print it and I get, let us get paper copies maybe then. Let's, let's think about the easiest way to, easiest way to confidentially distribute something, uh, balance the two, okay? Uh, thank you, Sam, thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, Chair, can I, can I ask one question? I want you guys to leave. Could this be eligible for WQIS, I think? What funding for nutrient reduction or is this kind of project not fit? Cause you're gonna have a much better plan than now.
From my experience in other areas. Virginia Resource Authority, rural development, they're willing to fund. Fund economic, right, the water control board and the health department. Not so much, it's all nutrient reduction for that, right? But. Now, IDA might be of source for economic.
Economic. That's another thing to look at, there, there are, you know.
Or Virginia too.
Yeah, there's low interest loan programs.
Whatever cost you're looking at does not necessarily mean that's the cost to Amelia.
There could be a whole suite of potential funding.
There would have to be.
We were about that.
Okay.
Plus, it could. I don't know what your credits are worth, but when you're not using. But you can.
Look at that, yeah. And usually those who need it look for it, so if you haven't been, your door hasn't been knocked on and maybe because they're, they don't amount to a lot. I, I don't know, but it's worth exploring. The, the firm, yeah, I mean, they aggressively look for it if they need it. The firm that you all referenced, Aquallaw, that did that work back years ago, they're, they're the experts on this, they're the firm. And, and I can connect with, with those guys if you want, they, they could give you a quick answer.
That was the next question.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you?
Yeah.
Do that and then get back to us, okay? Thank you, Joe.
Can you copy us on that as well?
Yeah. You guys know Chris Palmeroy, he works with Dick, and Chris Palmeroy, he's, he's the principal now there, yeah.
All right, thank you all very much, we can, we appreciate him. Right. Seems like great timing now, large, large costs. And now, uh, welcome our friends from BML VACO, um, like Holly's got the presentation up there, and then however you all want to stand, sit, come forward, we're very flexible.
Do you wanna go, wanna work the presentation, or do you want me to click through it?
That's good, right?
So what's gonna be part of this?
So it's a pleasure to be here with you all tonight, we're doing some work, I'm Bob Lotterberg with BML VACO Finance. Uh, we're doing some work with the IDA now. And we wanted to come tonight and talk to you, um, give you a few thoughts about, uh, financing capital projects. And we know you have this, this big project, uh, your consideration, and maybe others as well. So wanted to talk just in general terms about financing and some considerations, uh, to bear in mind. Uh, if the county, you know, chooses to go ahead with, uh, one or more of these projects, we would be delighted to be, uh, partners on your team. Uh, to help you, uh, work through the many issues. Um, so, um, what we're gonna be talking about tonight are things to consider when you're, uh, planning to undertake, uh, capital projects. Uh, potentially, what are the sources of funding that are available for them? Uh, I'm joined tonight with, uh, by Taylor Bryant. Taylor is Deputy Director for BML VACO Finance. And we wanted to start by having Taylor give you, uh, a little overview of what BML VACO Finance is. And what kind of services we, we provide.
All right, thank you all for having me. Um, since Bob said, I'm just gonna kind of give a brief review of our company and some of the services we offer. Bob will touch on some more specifics, maybe applicable to the county in here. So. We are a nonprofit corporation, established by the Virginia Municipal League and Virginia, Virginia Association of Counties. Since two thousand and three, we act as their financial services arm for towns, cities, counties, and localities all throughout the state of Virginia. Uh, the four main areas we assist localities are municipal advisory services, which we'll discuss, um, much more in depth tonight. We're a registered municipal advisor with the MSRB and SEC, which holds us to, uh, certain professional guidelines that I'll touch on in a second. Um, governmental financing, we assisted, uh, governmental entities throughout the state of Virginia and over one point one billion dollars in financings completed. Um, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Uh, investment management, uh, we have two point five billion dollars invested funds split between two trust funds that we operate and manage. And then, um, accounting services, we also have, have, um, accounting services arm where we provide accountants and accounting services to localities throughout the state of Virginia. And we are the administrator for the Virginia Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, there is, as of the end of fiscal year twenty, um, just a snippet of the, um, regions and counties that we've worked with. Uh, we're the most widely used financial services program in the state of Virginia, covering your accounting, investment, and, uh, financial advisory services. We're the most widely used financial services program in the state of Virginia, covering your accounting, investment, and financial advisory services. That's participants in every single one of those programs. As I said before, we're a registered municipal advisor with the SEC and MSRB. With that comes a code of conduct and a fiduciary duty, which tells us to certain standards. That we act in the favor of all of our clients, all of our municipal advisors on staff have passed, have taken and passed the series fifty. Exam, including Bob and myself. And in doing that, you have to meet certain standards for providing municipal financial advice. With that, every engagement, we have to have a formal written agreement outlining the terms and structure of our engagements. And when we onboard clients, we require to have one of those in place. And just over the last twelve months, just a selection of some recent engagements that could be applicable. These are three of the main municipal advisory services that we offer, financial forecasting and policies, and then different forms of financing. The main thing you'll see there is it's a number of different services offered to localities of all sizes, we've worked with just in the last twelve months, triple A rated credit cities. All the way down to towns with under two thousand members or constituents. We'll work with pretty much anyone, we consider all sorts of financing structures and all, you know, forms of reports and analysis for for localities. So we're able to meet any needs of pretty much any locality within the state.
Does the contract the EDA has, we can cover the county also?
Just the ADA as as of now, specifically for the DA.
Okay, so I'm just gonna touch on a few things to consider. As you're looking at capital projects to finance, and I'm not talking specifically about any any particular projects. The the wastewater plant that that you just heard the presentation about is maybe a little bit outside of what I'm gonna be focusing my comments on. That's a project that I ideally, and I don't know your particular circumstances. But ideally, the the rates that your rate payers pay for wastewater treatment. Would be set at a level sufficient to cover any additional debt service for a project like that. So I'm gonna be talking a little bit more globally about projects that that may be funded by the county itself through the the general fund budget.
Like the radio system upgrade we've talked about.
Right, that would be one of those. Anything that that you don't have. A rate structure set up to support. So just some things to consider, one is. You know, we don't want to assume that you're automatically going to issue debt to fully fund these projects, what other sources of funds? Might there be to fund those? So right now, local governments in in Virginia are. Are learning about grants that are available through ARPA. For the American Recovery. Program. You're probably more up up to date on how that's impacting Amelia, but my understanding is that. There's wide latitude for using these ARPA funds, and so you wanna look at the capital projects you have plans. And see if maybe some of these funds, you know, could be applied to that. You also wanna look at your unassigned fund balance, available funds that the county has that may be used to cash fund. Some projects, again, we don't want to assume that we're gonna issue debt off the bat if there are available funds that can be applied to that. When you're looking at the fund balance, it's a good practice and and this may be something the county is is already doing. If if so, we can review what policies you may have in place to maintain a fund balance at a at a certain level. It's a good idea to have that sort of policy in place that guides you over the years as you're entertaining new new projects. Allowing you to decide how much of this fund balance can we prudently apply to these to these projects? In adherence with with your policy. Another thing to consider are your existing debt obligations. So we wanna look at. What what's the debt service the county is currently paying for capital projects? And then what would that debt service, what would those payments look like after additional debt is issued? One of the things a municipal advisor can do is help to structure that debt so that you're smoothing out the the payments over the years. You don't want to take on a new project and get hit with huge debt service requirements. They quickly taper off, if you can smooth that out, then you can better absorb that with the natural growth in the county's budget. You wanna look at how these the projects that are under consideration fit into the the big picture. And the best tool for that is a five-year capital improvement plan. The county has has a five-year plan, we pulled it out on the on the website just to see what was in it, we see this wastewater project is. Is listed in in the plan, so. That's good planning, if there are other projects that the county is considering, you wanna make sure those are in the plan as well, again, what you're trying to do is to. To plan ahead, to smooth out, you know, these these obligations over time, so you're not. Unduly burdening the the taxpayers in the county. One of the things we can do as a municipal advisor to assist in that is to help with a five-year budgetary forecast, and this is something we just. Did a couple of months ago for Bodatot County. They were also looking at some large new projects and wanted to know. Are are we in a good position to be able to absorb those in our budget? Will it require additional revenues, and we were able to. Address that by forecasting for the county, both revenues and expenses. Over a five-year period, and then we overlaid the new projects that they had in mind, the the debt service for those projects. And that helped us answer the question, how much of that could they afford within the budget? What needed to be possibly delayed? What may require revenue enhancement, so that that gives policymakers like yourselves the information you need. To make the decisions on how to how to implement. And then another consideration is establishing the timing of the debt consistent with your policies on debt levels. So I think a starting point for us, if if we come in to assist the county. We'd wanna look at what existing policies do you have in place, these are two key policies concerning debt. Looking at your debt service as a percentage of general fund expenses. Again, now and also going for as you add additional projects. And your bonded debt, which includes general obligation and moral obligation debt as a percentage of taxable assessed value. It's just a rule of thumb, it's a way for counties of different size to kind of follow a a benchmark of best practices in terms of of how much debt. And this can help. Lead to your decisions about when do we want to implement these projects, what's the best way to roll these these out? If we do it all today, is that going to erode our financial standing? To our detriment, or can we stage those possibly at a period of time? It may not be necessary to stage it, it was something we would have to examine and then provide recommendations. In terms of financing options. These are the, these are four major options that localities use in Virginia. And for projects that are under about twenty million dollars, many times, particularly in in the current. The current environment, bank loans are a very attractive choice for those projects. Banks are competitive, interest rates are low. There may be other alternatives, but with interest rates so low and so compressed, the difference between different sources of financing are less. Pronounced than they than they were in the fast, in the in the past, and with bank loans, you have very low closing costs. And this whole process of issuing bank loans is very streamlined, so we're seeing more and more localities. And we've issued an awful lot of bonds in our in our history, but recently, we're doing a lot of bank loans. Because for those projects under twenty million, a lot of times that makes the most sense. Municipal bonds are particularly attractive for large-scale projects when you get over twenty million dollars. And and why is that, it's because there are very significant closing costs associated with municipal bonds. And their ongoing disclosure requirements, and the federal government has implemented all kinds of new requirements in terms of of disclosure. So there are a lot of, a lot of perils, but the interest rates on municipal bonds are attractive. And particularly when you get over twenty million, because at that point, you're covering those costs. You understand there might be some additional disclosure requirements, but the the savings in in interest. May make that all worthwhile. Government loan programs, another another option, and this is a way to take advantage of municipal bonds, but without. As significant costs, you're still gonna pay to these state agencies. Annual fees and so forth, and that has to be weighed in your in your calculations. But the ability to pull your project with other local governments can give you a cost-effective way to to finance projects. Formerly, before starting to work with VML VACO Finance, I was Executive Director of Virginia Resources Authority. And it was at that time, this is some time ago, but that was when we started the full bond program. And we felt this is a wonderful opportunity for local governments to pull their projects with other localities. Share a lot of the issuance costs, and that's still true today. The Virginia Public School Authority, another good choice for a lot of localities that qualify, that US Rural Development. Administration is is a possibility as well. Equipment leasing, when you're financing equipment. More often than not, equipment leasing is is going to be the best way to finance. All equipment leasing is, it's 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 basically leased to purchase. Financing, it's no different really than a than a bank loan, but it's it's considered a lease because you're using the equipment as collateral for the loan. This makes it real easy for a county, because counties can't give a general obligation pledge without a referendum. But here, you don't need one, you don't need that kind of pledge, you don't have to use your moral obligation either, you're just. Essentially pledging the equipment that you're leasing to the loan. And banks are very competitive on equipment leases, we'll put out RFPs. Taylor manages this process for us, we'll put out RFPs for equipment leases. And we'll get a large number of responses typically from banks across the country. Sometimes there are community banks, there are regional banks, or banks, you know, another part of the United States that that will bid on those. And and we'll select the lowest interest rate that that's being offered. This is one area where we found, there's not, there's not a single bank that you that you go to who's consistently offering the best. The best low interest rate, same as with bank loans, if there were, our job would be so easy, because we would just go to that that one bank. But their appetites for issuing debt change. Change based on the time of the year, even time of the month. And depend on what other loans they have in their portfolio, how much exposure they may have to local governments, they may not want to go above that. So a bank that was the most competitive last, you know, last quarter might not be so much this year, so. So the RFP process is very important to try to nail down who's offering the best interest rate in the market at at that time.
Bob, if I could just add to that, I heard you mentioning the radio system upgrade, that's eligible as an equipment lease, we've done three of those for counties over the last twelve months, and it's it's worked out very well, and they've been happy with it, so that's a structure that's available through leasing.
That's a good point, so usually it's it's movable equipment, you don't think of a radio system being movable necessarily, but I guess it could be. You know, if you're not paying the bills, they may come out and grab it from you, but. But radio systems, also some energy saving improvements in buildings. A HVA system that that may qualify as well, so so we always try to see if equipment leasing is is an option. So we've prepared a proposed engagement letter for Amelia County. It's it's there for you for your consideration. If you feel you need a municipal advisor, and if you're gonna take on a major project, I'd strongly recommend that you that you do consider that. We're able to serve as your municipal advisor, and and what we've done with our program is try to describe what we do in into these various categories. So we're proposing to the county these things, one is a credit benchmarks and debt capacity report. This is kind of a fundamental look that you may take at the county and its finances as you embark on financing projects. It's basically developing a credit profile for the county. We we can conduct a peer comparison and look at. Peer counties in Virginia, see how you how you stack up before the debt's issued and then after as well. And we do that so that we can advise you on what is your debt capacity, given your current tax base, what's what's. What's your capacity to take on debt, and we'll provide recommendations in connection with the projects that you're looking at. When you've decided to proceed with a project, we we can prepare a plan of finance. Where we're basically analyzing different strategies to fund the project that's being considered. Resort research available financing methods. Including looking at grants, there's some grants that are available. We're talking about the Water Quality Improvement Fund, other things like that. And then provide financing recommendations, and then finally, implementation. So we've decided how we want to finance, what's going to be financed, and then implementing that. And that, again, that could be bank loans, it could be state programs, could be municipal bonds, whatever it is. We've had experience in all of those areas and can help implement that for you. Also, as your municipal advisor, we would put a a term on the agreement, say renewable annually. Or something along those lines, so that you you would be able to call on us for any routine assistance. That comes up during the year, technical assistance, quick questions, attending meetings, what have you, so. So that's an open offer to the county to assist in that way. As Taylor said, we are the financial services arm of the Virginia Association of Counties. And this is something we've been doing now for about nineteen years and have served. Many, many localities in in the Commonwealth, we'd love to work with Amelia in the same way. Any questions, anything?
Number one, when you, in the earlier slide, when you talked about suggesting a starting point as the five-year budgetary forecast, was that included in one of those? Go back one slide. Was that included in one of those three major steps, or is that an additional suggestion?
Yeah, that that was sort of a a separate deliverable that it's it's not listed here, but we could certainly do that.
Sure. I mean, is that, but is that, where does that make sense within that, it seems like maybe it's the understanding of the debt capacity, it's with that first phase, is that the type thing that?
Yeah, I would say it overlaps a lot with with that first item, where you're basically trying to do the same same thing, just determine your debt capacity.
So what does all this cost? The advisor role that you're talking about, is it similar to what we're doing with the EDA?
Yeah, it's very similar, I I think you all have a. Yeah, it's very similar. I I think you all have a engagement letter which is being quoted.
So if some of these projects will run through the E D A, it would be covered under that agreement?
You know, I have to review the agreement, I think we have a retainer with the with the E D A. And then if we were to do deliverables, there would be some additional costs. So it's going to be, it's basically going to be the same as as what we're proposing for the county.
I think we're, I think we got that copy of the engagement letter, but I don't remember when. No, I think we got, I I'll refer, that'll tell me where to go look for it afterwards for detail. But for that thirteen thousand ish that's submitted and engaged, can you recap again what that what that would include?
All of these things.
All of these.
Plus the one Joseph asked about earlier, the one from the previous slide.
Yeah, let me put a finer point on it. So so the first two items, those are reports, that's where we go back to the office. We prepare a report, we probably interviewed people at the local level. If if we incorporate a forecast in there, then then we're interviewing a lot of people, you know, to to do all those reports. Financing implementation will really, that one will depend on.
That's what I was thinking.
If it's a municipal bonds, that's going to be a more expensive undertaking. Because the requirements for us as a municipal advisor will be a lot, a lot greater. So with, we we do offer local governments, we're the only municipal advisor who does this. Give local governments a choice, if they're doing bank loans or interim financing. We'll give you a choice whether you want to pay an annual fee while the loan is outstanding or an upfront fee and and be done with it. So they're they're essentially equivalent, but there might be reasons where one is more attractive than the other.
I'm trying to remember also our limits for for payment for our buyer's purchasing policy. Thirteen thousand falls and we don't have to do an R E, we just need a couple quotes.
I think it's the lowest threshold, it's in the lowest threshold.
And I think that doesn't even apply if you already have, like, you're already on the state purchasing list.
It also says some of that financial services, got it, Mr. Gore?
I have to look at it.
Or or do you have already existing, what is that called with the state purchase, like?
Like a cooperative?
Do you have any cooperative contracts with localities?
No, but if you want to bid it that way.
We could put one out that way.
All right, just trying to think about options and what.
Yeah, we, county's pretty nimble at that price.
Yeah, procurement wise. Thank you for the reminder.
I'd still like to get back to the question you were asking earlier. What was on our earlier slide and talk about doing, and is that something you would just do for us or is that something that's included in these deliverables?
You're referring to the five year budgetary forecast.
Yeah, there was a few things.
Yeah, the second one was the financial policies, like debt service as a percent of local general fund, that kind of thing.
But I would say that.
Yeah.
The five year forecast is kind of a new deliverable. So I'm not sure that. That we we were presenting that as a separate deliverable at the time we did the engagement letter. What we can do is we could recast the the credit benchmarks, debt capacity analysis. To include a five year forecast, it may be less. You know, less oriented toward the pure comparison and so forth. But but we could still do the five year forecast, that's the route you prefer.
Any other questions? Thank you, I think there's just a lot to think about here. Good, that's all we wanted was overview and education tonight, so I think you're.
And we, let me just say, when we tried the forecast for Broughton County, did incorporate in that. Some benchmark measures of surrounding counties, so they could use that for comparison. But but the real focus of our effort with with that study was the developing a five year.
Thank you. Very helpful, appreciate it. Do we, we need a copy of that to post, to post if we already have one.
Presentation, yeah, I think I emailed one to Taylor.
Okay, just make sure Brenda can post that plus the one from B and B earlier.
So I think it would be helpful for us to know where we stand compared to other localities as far as our debt service level and our general fund reserves and.
Yeah, I don't know how we, I don't know how we can really think about any of these other projects without understanding what that capacity is.
Carla may be able to do it, she may be able to go to the other counties and get information, it's all public.
It's in the other county's audit.
Yeah, so maybe maybe we could ask her to do it.
Hey, it's Carla, take a look at, yes, sir.
Yeah, I I think I just don't really understand what would be, what's more, I feel like there must be something more than that they would be doing.
I mean, we can just.
I mean, separate from this, separate from what they're proposing.
No, but I mean, do you really need to pay somebody to do that for you is what I'm saying. That's all they're going to do.
Well, I don't think that's, so if you just wanted to go, for example, we just wanted to go out and fund seven million dollars for the radio, for the radio system. I think that's realmish for that, six to seven. Yeah, we can, we could go, we could put our own R F P out if we if we wanted to. That's not really in the realm of what they, they're talking about much bigger packages of funds.
Something like that, we could go and get the grants and then we could go to the bank.
That's what I was thinking.
But you're also thinking about like, if we, you know, if we just think about all the stuff we've already put out. People to get assessments on things like that, so we've got radio system. Animal shelter, handle building, library, parks and rec, water, sewer. Part of what you'd be paying them for is to say, like, one of those slides was the suite of all the things you want to be able to do and how to go about doing them. So if we're just doing one project and moving forward, I'm sure we can handle it between Jeff and Carl and others. If you've got a couple of things you're trying to consider, having people who are experts work in the field every day. I think that's where you're where you're getting the balance is, what are the many, many options?
Wouldn't we have to decide which ones we're going forward with? We need to figure it, man. To start the product.
We have figures for a lot of.
Give us the figure and we have to design it.
Yeah, I I totally agree and I think I think there's not one before the other, I think about it being parallel. I don't necessarily want to go, here's all the things I want, oh, we don't have money for it. Like, at the same time, it's figuring out what what we want or need for the county, to understand what the capacity is. They totally make this number up, let's say we could borrow twenty million a year within our existing budget. Debt service on that. To know going in, we could borrow twenty million a year without raising taxes. That really helps you when you're trying to figure out the what do you want and need, how do you prioritize? You know, you know, I can do thirty million without raising taxes, that helps you in a very different, so I think you kind of want to know both. You don't want to spend whatever your maximum is, but you also don't want to start planning for something that's not within your budget. You know, if you're going to buy a car like for your family, you usually just know what you, you know. But with the, these amounts being so big, you know, like you would go and you, you know, you would say like, I know I can afford X hundred dollars per month. It's a payment, we don't really know exactly what the county can afford because the cut of the finances are so much more complicated. All right, I, yeah, I think we need to. I I do think we need to move forward with something, I'm not saying I speak tonight, I think we can take this and think about it. I'm not going to say just that, period, I think we've already got all these paths working forward though, figuring out how much things cost. I do think we need that other path, making some more progress too on how much we can afford and what are the different options. So I'm going to recommend that we put this on the next meeting, like the July meeting agenda. For us to come back and really come and let's talk about a plan for some next steps around that. Whether that be, you know, deliverables we want to see from Carla. I think Taylor and Carla can talk in the meantime, what she's able, what she's able to commit to, want to be careful. She's very generous, but she has a limited amount of time. You know, as the, as well as what we might want to do for V M L V A C or others. But we're going to get to the point where then all these projects are going to come to a halt because we have no idea how to proceed with them. And we've talked about already the costs of waiting. Gets, what do we say, radio systems double the price now because previous boards waited. So we don't want to, a couple of years from now, people say that about us. And not that we have to do all of them, to your point, we got to be our luck. All right, so I'll put down for us to revisit that for July. All right, I think those were our longest topics, we've got a couple more numbers here, but I think we'll move a little bit faster than. Mr. Gore, you're up next to kind of fill us in on what some of our options are around lights and.
Joseph, can I kind of go one second? I'm not trying to overstep on y'all, but Rebecca is on here to talk about the six year plan. Move her up, totally up to y'all.
I'd just say it would be on standby.
That's great, no, that's great, thank you for letting me know, if you're okay, we'll jump to that then, okay, everybody all right to move to, you know, next. I'm sorry Rebecca, I didn't, if you were on the screen, I didn't see you there today.
I printed these out, I emailed them to everybody, I got from Rebecca, sorry they're so small, I had no idea. Much bigger on the computer.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
But I like paper conscious of everything, so. So some of it seemed a little confused, confusing to me, so I emailed Rebecca and and I think I think I understand it all now. So so the first, I guess the first easy one to get out of the way is the one with the green highlighted roads. So these are the roads that, and I also emailed these to Brenda by the way, she can put them, attach them for everybody else to see. The green highlighted roads are the roads that that are possible to to be paved, they're the only ones that qualify. You've got an Amazonian Road, West Bunker Hill, Stony Point.
From a traffic.
Yes.
Enough traffic.
Yes, they qualify through V dot, yeah. Beaver Pond, Selma Road, and then Absolut Lane. And you look at the, it gives you the specs on them, but if you look at the end, kind of the important part for us to estimate a cost. For each of those projects is right there on the end. Currently, what we have is for this year is Buckskin Creek, which is already, is already had been figured in. And Rebecca, I'm not sure, so the the Selma Road one on this sheet that you give us. Is that, has that already been added or is that the one you're saying that that it's recommended to add?
It has not been added, you all. I I did just want to mention, we did, this is the dead end portion of Selma Road. That in previous years, it hasn't qualified in previous years. But Taylor Harvey mentioned to me that there was an additional residence that had been built there. And we checked the traffic volume and it does now qualify. So I did just want to point that out because I think that there have been requests in the past for that road.
Right, and that's how I understood it, so, okay. Oh, let's see, the unallocated funds are combined with funding for anticipated for next year is three hundred and twenty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty nine dollars. And then she sent me the twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. Each year's different amounts, which, but it equates to three hundred and seventy two thousand. So we've got roughly almost eight hundred thousand dollars in rural rustic funds coming between now and fiscal year twenty twenty six. So we could basically add these roads, depending, we could look at the cost on the ends and see which ones we can fully fund. And have those roads paved.
Do we have some leftover from last year?
Thought they'd take that back.
It it it's rolled over into, it's part of this, I think part of the three hundred and twenty eight thousand, isn't it, non-used? That's part of this.
Yeah, so on Buckskin Creek, it's receiving forty five thousand, around forty five thousand additional this coming fiscal year, July first. But there are still funds from last year that were not allocated to Buckskin Creek. So that, that's around a hundred twenty seven thousand.
We were going to allocate that to Selma Road.
Yeah, and 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 we can, like, I mean, that's where she's added that. In order for us to advertise, we have to have a, we have to advertise and vote on it for the two week period too. And I asked Rebecca, I said, well, you know, are there V dot recommendations, you know, as far as which ones for us to pick? And she said that as far as their headache. Stony Point Road and Folks Bridge Road. I guess, I guess they're just more high maintenance as far as washing out and stuff like that.
That's right, yeah, and like I said, it's totally up to the board, you all get to choose the priorities for those projects. But since you did ask about our recommendations, those are ones that are particularly maintenance concern for us.
Do you have the daily traffic counts for for each of these that are in green, each one is eligible?
I do not have it readily available in front of me, but they they each have over fifty vehicles per day, that's the criteria. But I could pull that together for each one. But I don't have it right off the top of my head, but I could pull that together and.
That's, I didn't, I didn't necessarily expect it to have off the top of your head.
It's fifty vehicles a day to qualify.
So the greens, so everything green's at least fifty.
Based on the current, the current money and funding, if we do Selma Road. We, within six years, will not have enough to do Selma Road, Folks Bridge and Stony Point, if you do the math. But we could do one of those and then one or two of the smaller projects probably. And then that would get us through the six years and then. Who knows what, you know, they may change or upgrade or cut, but I guess, I guess this is guaranteed.
Is Folks Bridge still on the schedule to be replaced, the bridge itself?
Um, I believe so, but the the section that we're talking about is just the gravel section. I don't know, I'd have to check the schedule for that bridge.
I think the gravel all the way to the bridge.
Because Lynchburg's district. I believe that the bridge belongs to Cumberland County, which is the Lynchburg district, so Ms. Worley might not have that information.
Thank you for that, that is Lynchburg district, but yeah, they did send us a detour route, so I don't have the schedule. But it is scheduled for replacement, that's right.
I mean, the reason, the reason I was asking, I think it's obvious, let me just clarify, the reason I'm asking for the count. I mean, I think there's some value in dealing with the higher vehicle count roads first, that gets the most people benefiting. While I know we've heard about complaints with Selma, in theory, that's going to be the lowest vehicle count. Because it just barely got above the fifty now, where the others had already been fifty or higher. I'm not saying don't do Selma, I'm just, I'm trying to think of a logical way to do it versus just to ask.
Folks Bridge, I'm sure David, you know, that is a problem road all of the time. I think GPS sends trucks the wrong way and everything else over there.
Actually, Stony Point Road is worse than Folks Bridge.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's worse since the bridge was replaced because now. More headache going, when they replace the bridge and folk grids, we'll be going through the same process. But the traffic has really increased on Stony Point.
And I see y'all been up there working on it, thank you Rebecca, a whole lot better.
We could add both of those, not do Selma and we have the funding because that's. Six hundred, six, six hundred and fifty eight thousand. And we got seven hundred, seven hundred ninety, almost eight hundred thousand in the six year plan. We could do. Oh, we could do both of those and Selma, actually. Right, Folks Bridge and Stony Point.
Yeah, where you couldn't bring any, but any, all the other ones that are left are too expendable, they would push over.
And they're, they're all, yeah, seemingly bigger anyway. But I think we could fully fund those three.
Which three?
Um, so, so Stony Point, Folks Bridge, and Selma Road. I think that's pretty close.
So I, I did wanna add, I, I think you mentioned the three hundred twenty eight thousand dollar amount available. So that's available starting July of next year, twenty twenty two. And, um, so then if you add the following four fiscal years, it's a total of seven hundred thousand, nine hundred dollars essentially. So it's not, I don't think it's quite enough to get all three of those. Um, but certainly if you offset priorities, you know, we could fund them as that money becomes available each fiscal year. Um, and you have the opportunity every year to update your plan and to add priorities to it. So as that money came available in future years, we could, um, fund some of those other projects.
What is, what if we looked at them? Roads with houses. Stony Point or Folks Bridge have any houses. I know they got traffic, but it's sort of no houses on the dirt portion. Where like Zuma Road does have houses. Um, Absolut, I'm not, I had to go there and check on that one, I don't know. I think it's a driveway or two, was it, do it though, it stops at Bobby Lee's.
Joe Shank.
Joe Shank.
That is dense, populated, you say, but.
Right.
Yeah. Um. Beaver Pond Creek, I know that's got some. That right.
So next, alright, so we need to decide what the priorities are, advertise them and then put them in. They're not gonna get done immediately anyway, like you said, the next one queued up already is, uh, to finish Buckskin. And we're not gonna have any money for the next one to start even until twenty twenty. Two, you said, or twelve? Right.
Twenty-three, so.
Twenty-three.
Yeah. So I put it a hundred thousand and twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-four.
You gotta wait for it to simulate it up.
So yeah, so it may be three years before you could do the next one, you know. Well, it won't be, because we already have three hundred and twenty eight thousand available now.
Hmm, but what about the carryover?
Yeah, so.
We have enough to get.
So that's three hundred.
Yes, we have three hundred and twenty eight carryover.
Coming fiscal year.
Yes, to, to do.
Selma.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that three hundred twenty eight thousand, that, um, that total is available July one. And, um, if there was a project that could be funded at that amount, we could actually start it in the spring of twenty twenty-two. As long as construction didn't complete until that new fiscal year in July. Um, so we could start the next project, um, a year from now, um, if it's at within that three hundred twenty eight thousand dollar amount.
Firstly, I'm very interested in the, the traffic count. I mean, I understand what you're saying about the houses, but the max, to me, the, the way you get the maximum value is the largest number of vehicles that are traveling on it. So I'm interested in that for understanding the prioritization. I'm not follow, sorry, I got some, uh, they're not following the other prioritization. I'm not following how Selma is getting so much conversation on prioritization. I understood the Stony Point, the Folks Bridge, because of through traffic, maintenance costs and life safety, um, traversing that. What, why do we keep coming up to Selma?
I don't know, was it citizen complaints? I, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Pretty much.
I, I've had several complaints, especially when the other part of Selma Road has been done.
Um, oh, right, right.
Yeah, I, it's just.
You know, there'd be some benefit to asking for it.
I mean, I, my opinion, like, I don't, I mean, I like our dirt roads, I, but I don't live on them either. But, um, you know, I think that we should probably put something on there, because I can see V dot saying, oh, well, you're not using this in a couple of years. And depending on who's running the show and just do something else with it.
Oh, I, I, I think we should put something on.
You know, that's, I mean, as to what, I, I have no recommendations or, or any, nobody's, the only road that I've had complaints about is, um, currently, um, Buckskin, which is getting done anyway. So, and, and we've been, we've been talking about this on and off for a year and, and, I mean, we really haven't had any input other than.
We've been talking about Selma since before you guys were on the board.
I don't know, okay.
Well, it never met the criteria.
Years in a row.
Yeah.
Never just the criteria, what are you talking about?
Right, right.
Yeah. Right.
I mean.
So can we get the, can we get the traffic count numbers? And we don't have any idea if they're all closed, if there's like some that are double, we, none of us know the counts well enough. Can we get the counts, come back with those facts and then make a decision and advertise?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Good, okay. Alright.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send those over, um, probably tomorrow, I should be able to pull that quickly.
Okay, and we only need it for those green, yeah.
Yeah.
The ones that are eligible.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on. Okay, back to you. Thank you for all that. Thank you Rebecca.
Okay, so we were asked to look at, um, options or tools that are available under state law to deal with, to help the county deal with properties that are, um. That may have some, some issues as far as, uh, well, clutter was the term that started this conversation, I think, because that's a new law that passed. That adds to an existing statute of granting local authority to deal with trash, grass, weeds, bamboo, and other things like that. That are sort of out of control on, on private property. Um, and then, so that, I think, started the conversation and then, and then I was asked to look at sort of what, what all the tools are out there, as long as you're looking at it. A- as well as what the county is currently doing. On the last point, um, you know, I've looked through my files, we've been working with the county for, since before two thousand and seven, so probably a couple of years before that. Taylors looked through files, staffs looked through files, I'm not sure you have much on the books, um, uh, in, in the areas that I'm gonna talk about here. So I think you were provided with a memo dated June third. Um, I just tried to keep it brief, but it sort of got, got a little, uh, lengthy, but it really is just an overview. And I'll just skim, I'll just hit the highlights of it, I'm not gonna read this, I'm gonna hit the highlights in a few, couple of minutes here and, and stop me, cause I think there's, I think what you're gonna realize is there's sort of more conversation's gonna be needed. Um, and really, it's gonna come down to what, what the board, what the county priorities are in these areas, cause there's a lot of different options. The first one that's highlighted doesn't require you to do anything as far as adopting ordinance, that's just, that's, that's current statute dealing with, uh, a, a public nuisance. So there is authority now, um, if there is a property where, um, a public nuisance exists, now that's a pretty high bar. That's, that's like an imminent threat to life or property or public safety. It's, it's, it's not an easy thing to prove, but it's something that there is a court process for. Um, so that you don't need to do anything, if there, if there's a sort of a critical situation that's not being addressed, the, the statute is there and the county could pursue it and we could assist with that. Um, the rest are, 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 I think, more what you're talking about, and that is what tools could be adopted by ordinance. So the first one is, is the, the, sort of the broad statute that the clutter was added to this past general assembly session. Um, it doesn't apply to active farming operations or land zone for, for farming. Um, this, this creates what's administrative tools, so it's not a court, it's not going to court. It's, is, you know, you establish in, in line with the statute, you establish the, um, uh, the ordinance that sets out, uh, not only the criteria. But also the enforcement mechanism, so it's a lot of due process, it's.
It pretty much gets that.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, and it's pretty well defined in the statute and it also provided you all examples of some other localities in some of these topics, what they've adopted. So it's pretty prescribed what you do in, under the state law, but it, but it's a, you know, you provide notice, you provide a chance for the property owner to fix the situation. Uh, if that doesn't happen, then, then you can assess civil penalties, you can go in and actually abate the, the, the problem. Um, and you, and then, and then the cost of doing that would then result in a tax lien being placed on the property. So that's how ultimately the county could be made whole, whole for those costs that are incurred. The question on this route is, you know, what would the county want to do? I mean, cause there's, there's different options in, in the statute, you know, what, would you want it all encompassing to be able to deal with grass and, and weeds and clutter and garbage? Or would you wanna focus it on a particular category underneath that statutory authority? So that's the first one, uh, I think that's sort of the most relevant to what you all, that we're talking about at the last meeting. And there's others sort of, uh, related to this topic broadly. You turn to page two, you'll see, um, unsafe buildings and structures. So there's another statute that deals with buildings and structures that are creating a, uh, public health and safety, uh, issue. And there's authority to adopt an ordinance, same kind of thing with, with, with standards and with due, with due process, notice, chance to cure, they fail, then you can impose penalties. You can abate the problem, get a tax lien. Um, there's one specific, a statute specific to blighted property. Um, uh, which is, uh, again, another avenue, uh, sort of prescribed in that statute, what, what is defined as blighted property. Um, and you're essentially declaring it a public nuisance through that statute and you would adopt an ordinance, you'd have a program for enforcement. Another, the, the next one on page two, that's a property maintenance code, that's, you know, I don't know that there's ever been any, any real talk in Amelia of doing that. I mean, it's enough to have a building code on the front end, property maintenance you're dealing with. Um, and usually it's more populated counties, um, with more housing, um, more urban and suburban counties will have a property maintenance code. And that's something you would really have to staff up. Um, and that's going around, um, enforcing ongoing maintenance standards. Versus what you do now, what you have to do now under the law is the upfront, you know, is it built safely? So there is, but there's opportunity there to, to, to deal with, uh, this, another angle is through a property maintenance code. Um, there's inoperable motor, motor vehicles, and, and that's the one I thought the county may have done, but I looked and I didn't find it, so I, we can still dig, but.
I can't speak to, a lot of these fall under the environmental organizations that Patty enforces, so I'm not gonna be able to speak to the specifics of them. But I know there is an inoperable.
Okay.
There is, and I think the number is five. It's five, yeah, and there, there are ordinances under Patty's for grass already and solid waste, so trash. I think they are all, just based on Patty's feedback, they are lacking the enforcement component.
Okay.
Of, yeah, we have, you can't have your grass this high, but besides slap on the wrist in a strongly worded letter, we can't really.
Yeah.
Do much beyond that.
And then maybe they just need to be updated.
Yeah, probably.
To reflect current, current law.
Right, exactly.
Um, and, uh, okay, well, that's good to hear. Now, when she gets back in town, maybe she can say, again, once you have a codified code of ordinances, this is, we won't, we won't rely on someone being in town, we will actually be able to go to the code.
Um, which is a project that's.
Get that in the same.
That everyone.
Like, that's a very good project. Um, so there's an operable motor vehicles, we'll look at that, we'll look at the grass one and see if those need to be updated, if you even, if they're even still relevant for you. Junk yards, graffiti, there's a, there's, there's statute allows you to deal with graffiti and, and, and actually abate it and, and collect costs. Um, the next, the cup, next couple of pages just talk about the, sort of the administrative process. It's really, it, it varies a little bit from statute to statute, but the ones that allow you to adopt an ordinance, to have a program, to abate these situations, to, to cure them yourself. It's similar for all of them, and that is notification, a time to cure typically, if they don't, then you can go in if you choose. You would have the authority at that point to go and actually onto the property and abate the situation, whatever it is, grass, clutter, whatever you do in the ordinance. Um, and then ultimately would result in a, in a tax lien, um, on, on the property. Um. That's, that's the overview, so I think there's more maybe consideration, more work to do. But I mean, I could answer questions or we can, you know, obviously keep, keep working on it and getting you more information. Whatever, whatever.
Slipper flow, we need to play our card right on. I'd like to see what the ordinances are already in place before.
Yeah, he sent some.
I didn't, I looked, I didn't.
Well, as we sent examples from other localities, what I didn't have is what.
It's like Chesterfield, then, then witty, huge one.
He's talking about the ones Patty has.
Rock you mouth.
Existing with here.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't have what's, I don't have what.
Patties aren't examples, but.
None, well, I think he.
That is a what?
That is a.
Is already in place.
Yeah, I mean, that what you asked for?
I'd like to see that, and I haven't, I haven't seen that, so I like.
But like you said, that's something about.
I've already read these, you can actually have my copy. Yeah.
What Patty has.
Patty has.
Right, and they, they're probably pretty dated, if, if they weren't in our files, then they're probably pretty dated.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And.
Alright, so you, so, yeah, I think, first of all, I don't believe any of us expected we were gonna make some, take some urgent action on this. So discussion, I think, is exactly all we were asking for. Yeah, if for next month's workshop, we could pull and you could give some, maybe some recommendations on, on Patty's pieces.
Okay.
Let's recap maybe, because I don't know that we've really had a discussion in the public session of like, why this has come up. And it's the increasing number of complaints that we're getting from citizens about properties. There are some specific ones that keep coming up over and over. The reason I personally was, was very opposed to the word clutter, and we didn't use the word clutter originally, that was what, that was the piece added to the state, added to the state law. None of us were, that I know of, were, have any desire to enforce clutter. It's more what's listed here in the piece that Mr. Gore gave us around unhealthy, unsafe, and, you know, like this, this kind of language of endangering the health or safety. That's several, um, properties around the county where people strongly believe that's the case. And I think they have a pretty good case to make around that. The county keeps sending letters and as Holly said, that's all we can do, we just keep sending letters and. We hope the property owner is nice enough to do something about it, um, and that's not really happening.
When you use words like clutter and mess and stuff like that, it depends on who you're talking about.
Correct, which, which is why, I agree with Mr. Phelps' piece too on the slipper slope, I think that's why this report did not rush.
You're right.
Yeah, but.
Actually try to, try to define it to, to.
Yeah.
Say exactly what the situation is.
Well, and we did, did bring up the question, wait, why'd you do that? And I, I read him that, can we, can we separate it? Can you do the sanitary district versus the rest of the county? Cause we don't have town limits, but I, I, I mean, we write the rules and we write our own rules within a certain area. Is, is, are we legally allowed to do that?
Yes, if we are, that'd be way out my go.
Yeah.
And it could.
And I just, I mean, I use the standard, we call it.
So we just make sure I understand, we would want to protect the property value and the safety of certain citizens, but not others, is what we would say.
Right, but, yeah, particularly.
Now, like, yes.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying.
Because if we're doing, but it's not for, it's not about appearance, nothing I said was about appearance. It's about health, safety, endangerments, not clutter.
Oh, well, but, I mean, that should be done.
Right.
Anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Um.
I think if it's so slip, if it's so questionable that you only wanna do it in a, in a portion, then I think it, it runs afoul of David's very slow piece that I would worry about. Like, if it's not clear enough.
I don't know, I don't know, and when you're in the village area, you wanna attract tourism and things, it's a little different than being way out on, on a back road.
Right.
From an appearance, from an appearance.
Perhaps, I think it depends on whether your property next door or not.
If you're talking about clutter, but.
Which we're not.
About something different.
Yeah.
That's different.
Correct.
There, this, uh, this ordinance, I think that Patty has been talking about, it's ordinance, it's a long one, but it also includes governing the maintenance and condition of property. So we'll, we'll pull that.
Yeah, and if we have to add enforcement teeth to that, then that's probably the easiest thing to do.
Yeah.
So that she can assess penalties.
I don't have any, I don't have any.
No, I'd say.
I mean, drug exposure, that doesn't hurt anybody.
I can forward you, um.
Six cars.
Okay.
I think he asked.
All right, I think that's a good starting point for today. Again, we were not in a rush for anything related to that. Okay.
I'm talking about in the village.
I know. My point. All right.
Maybe, I mean, this, the the clutter statute, clutter specifically can't be enforced. In agri, in farming districts, so I, you know, there's, there's already precedent in the statute. For distinction by zoning classification or use classification. So that's something we can look at and see, you know, i- if the board did want to go down that path, or at least know whether it's even a path you can go down. Broadly, we can look at that.
I like, I like to see your process.
Yeah, who reports it?
Easily, yeah, he's laid it out in those two, yeah. All right, um, we're coming up on two hours, so we'll try to keep moving along here. Uh, Roger, you're up for the next one.
We'll, we'll pass with that one, there's not a whole lot to report.
Well, I just said out loud for everybody, uh, is the taxation of solar, yeah.
Jeff and Holly and Laura and I have discussed it, we've been going back and forth a lot, we looked at some options of other. Communities Sussex County with one and Palatane with another. But what we really need is the information from this farm that wants to go in.
Yep.
Up for West Creek, it's a much bigger one than either of the two that we looked at. And work on a siding agreement so that we can actually do a comprehensive financial analysis, so which is the right way to go. At least, at least for that project, that would be an example. I did put, I did run a quick. Quick analysis that.
So what I don't understand, why you're looking at analysis, what I don't understand about that is why you would want to base it on a specific project? Instead of saying this is generally what's.
It's an example, it's it's a real life example of something that wants to win to Amelia that we could take and. Really analyze it for which way would be the best way to go.
Yeah, and one, and until you have the capital expenditure numbers.
Yeah, we need to cap that.
An actual project, it's hard to analyze the difference, because you, here's the decision you're faced with. Do you want to adopt a revenue share ordinance, which would be a flat amount per megawatt, fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt? Per year with an inflation escalator every five years, five percent under state law? Or go with a traditional M and T taxation approach? That is very complicated, it's because of depreciation schedules and all that. But but that's the stuff we've been talking about offline. And that calculation, I think, really depends on the project, and I mean, it depends on the scale of the project. Because once you've made that decision, you're stuck with it going forward, so.
And which decision you make, it's not, kind of, kind of affects what the solo developers are willing to negotiate into a siding agreement.
Correct.
Because they want to know how they're going to be taxed before they say what they'll give.
Yeah.
It's, it's a.
Right. And until they share details of a, and and it makes sense to make the decision when you have a significant project.
Right, this one is a significant one, and it would be a great example to dig into, and Holly's trying to get the numbers.
Jeff and I have met with him about the setting agreement, because as far as I know, this is the first one Amelia's done. There's a setting agreement, yeah, so we don't have any kind of precedent on mine for that. Um, but Jeff has done them, so we talked to them and they should be getting something in soon. Um, and once we've got a good draft of that, then y'all will be seeing that probably in a closed session setting that I would.
Here, I made these for you guys just to have a look. This is the Sussex County one, that the siding agreement is built into it, that's why that's, there's this big hockey stick. In the beginning, because there was a big cash payment upfront. But then the blue line is M and T and, you know, depreciation over time, it pops off. The per megawatt continues to go up, and there's a point where it crosses and and the megawatt tax is more beneficial. But a point that, I don't remember if Jeff or Laura brought it up, but if they upgrade the equipment twenty-five years in. Then M and T goes back up, because it's assessed on the. So, so this could be affected by that in in the later years, making M and T more attractive. So. But in this case, in this particular case, after forty-five years. The megawatt tax brought in twelve point three million and the M and T only brought in eleven point six. But there was a lot more upfront in the M and T.
So, and that's why that county chose to stake with them.
Exactly.
And the depreciation schedules that are set by the State Corporation Commission. And they have recently improved in locality's favor, because I think they were antiquated. And VACO is really gets the credit, VACO is lobbying hard for those schedules to be looked at again by the SEC. They were really aggressive, um, and they've been proved, and that changes the calculus.
Yeah, these guys did the the analysis before and after.
And after.
And it was a big difference.
Well, it was significant.
What do you want to do? You want to break, you want to postpone or have a follow-up conversation with us and give us a timeline?
Well, we did more, I think. We need to get some more information, we need the CapEx numbers, they must have them.
Well, yeah, I think it's probably not in their their benefit to provide them, I mean, this is.
I don't know, they're pretty open.
They are very, and they're great to work with, I will say that, they are wonderful to work with, so they. They might, we'll see, I'll reach out to them again and see if they can get them a little quicker.
All right.
And the other thing we need to do is talk about the signing agreement and what we want. Not what they're willing to give, but what we want, because it is a negotiation.
Do you want to bring the whole, are we ready for the whole thing to come up then, signing agreement in July as well?
Want to talk about that.
No, I'm not saying the board needs.
Well, we can do closed sessions too, but I mean, the point is when?
The, no, the signing agreement won't be ready to come to y'all in July.
Come here.
August.
Okay.
Well, that depends on the company, I, you know, they were, it depends on when they.
Sure.
We might get the CapEx numbers before then, though.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's realistic. I talked to him last weekend, I'm hoping to get something in very soon.
Okay.
All right, the good news is the state laws have gotten better.
Yeah.
You have more tools to make these projects work.
Spreadsheets we can take from projects like this one to quickly get an idea.
That's right.
Anything else on this topic?
No.
All right, Taylor, do you have any updates on the, from the cigarettes?
Yes. Not a whole lot, I've talked to Bill Hepstey, Bill Hepstey is going to present in next Tuesday, Wednesday, I guess. In this room. He's going to do it virtually, but he's going to talk to the counties in the CRC to gauge their interest. He is working to set up a meeting with the other group of administrators. Between them and Representative or Executive Director from the Northern Virginia Cigarette Taxation Authority. To give them a heads up as fun things. And Kevin Massengill, who's kind of ran riding this, says that of the folks that were in on the original call. Mecklenburg has decided they do not want anything to, uh, they're not going to participate. But all the others are still very interested.
You're right.
So it's moving, moving along. Yeah, I think that one of the things that we caught in that first meeting, and and Mr. Gordon knows a whole lot more than I do. Is there were several communities that wanted this thing to be effective January the first. And he was going to have to be pulling the fast track to get there. And it's counsel sort of like, it's almost an impossibility, you better be prepared to do it July the first. Don't count on it before then, so that's, that's what I have.
So we're still following along, keeping our options open, learning, okay, thank you. All right, um, we have, so in our last full meeting, uh, our last regular meeting from May. We closed out the work from Baker Tilly, and we said the next part, next phase of that would be development of a new personal. Personnel policy, and for this month, we would talk about membership of a personnel policy development committee. Some stuff I should add to discuss them and open. So. My, you know, I think ideally committees, the smaller they are, the more efficient and effective they are. At the same time, I think this one is, um, something that every department is, has a very strong vested interest in, appropriately so. And I'm not sure we're going to be able to get by with a super small committee on this case. So I, my suggestion is that we need to offer, um, for each of the. See, yeah, yeah. Constitution officers, thank you, constitution officers a seat on the committee, because they each have large enough staff. And again, very vested interests. I think if any one of them chose not to, you know, and wanted to let others proceed, I think that would be fine. Then outside of the CEOs, and I'm going to come back to the the employees fall under purview of board supervisors and come up and. County administrator, then we've got the library and the registrar are the other two. And as we talked about last month, then we aren't forcing, that we're not planning to force anybody into the personnel policy. But the accelerated or increased salary structure is something that goes along with the personnel policy. So there is incentive for people to follow that. At the same time, not wanting to, again, dictate this, that was the point of the creation of a committee, so that everyone could come together. Create a new personnel policy from there, so. My suggestion would be, and and again, it's not small, but I don't know a different way to suggest, open ideas. Would be to offer to all the five constitution officers, library and the registrar. Again, anyone who said, hey, I'm fine with whatever y'all come up with, great, they could also just be kept updated, not have to go to all the meetings per se. Um, and then we need to decide what our our own representation we would want. We have the largest number of employees, uh, of course, under the board and the county administrator. You know, I don't know that we want to have five different people representing within that either, so where can we, uh, vest some authority? For participation in that.
Do we have the largest number of employees?
I assumed so. Oh, no, I didn't mean combined, I didn't know combined, I mean.
Yeah, we're less than half.
I meant individual groups, yeah, I mean, like registrar is three.
Yeah. Is the registrar and the library already on our policy or not?
I don't think so.
No.
Library took our policy and adapted it for their own use, and they adopted that.
So right now, it's all the county administration that's under it.
Correct.
Okay.
And DSS is under the state policies.
The state policy.
Yeah, that's true, and they weren't, for that reason, they weren't into the study results, just like work, work personnel. Were not, yes.
They, they can't elect to go under.
Yes, and they.
There is.
And they could even, once we get this then developed, right? Not sure what the incentive or not would be, but. I I don't think anyone is set a goal that we would want to exclude somebody, I think that's, we're trying to go from this very inclusive approach of offering to everybody. So, does anyone have thoughts other, other than offering to each of the CEOs plus library and registrar? And then. All right, so that, everyone's good with that, I don't think we need to vote on this. And, um, and then, yeah, for all those that fall under the board and the county administrator. How do we want to structure that representation? Very much including your take on this as well. We're advertising for an HR person, but we don't have one full-time currently, so that does complicate the situation a little bit. But that, even what we're advertising is for more of an administrator, administrator specialist type position, not a.
What, what kind of a track is that on?
I know it's out there in advertise, I don't know what the, I think it's only been advertised one week, so I don't know what the, um. It's under college, you know.
What's the question?
Person, like how much progress, do you know we have rec, like, um, responses to it or anything like that?
We've got two applications.
What's a good one?
We, we have it open and tough filled, um, so it has been, this is the second week. Um, it is on BACO VML.
Two.
Oh, only two, so. Spread word.
So are we rewriting the policy?
From scratch, with, um. Baker Tilly offered to give a templated starting point, but essentially a rewrite, yeah. Taylor, do you want to personally participate? Do you want to delegate someone within your organization, Jimmy?
Well, I would think if we're going to have an HR person, we'd probably let them. Take the lead on it, if it's going to be their area, I would, I would think you would certainly want that person there.
Yeah, with our stated deadline of end of September.
Yeah, it could be challenging, kind of pass the hiring date.
I don't mind being involved.
Baker, reminder from last, conversation last month, Baker Tilly agreed, they would facilitate the process for us. So we don't, we don't need a leader for it, we, they're going to facilitate, we're just looking for participants who's going to represent.
You have to have an independent entity doing that anyway, facilitate.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
I don't.
How about, yeah.
I don't mind saying, no, I mean, we kind of push this thing through it. That's not my big, I'd like to see everybody agreeing on, on something, whether it's what we got or what we feel. Finish it.
Awesome.
Get some projects finished.
I much appreciate that.
You helping, ain't you?
Yeah, you got it, you got it. Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to follow through with Baker Tilly, make sure they get all their ducks in a row. I I think we can, I do want to limit the numbers, I'm fine not saying I'm a. Yeah, if if you're, if you're okay representing the board on that, I think we're alive, it's a big group effort anyway. I think, yeah, we could do that, and then as soon as the HR person gets hired, I think that obviously makes sense for them to come on on board. And I don't think we're excluding others, we're just trying to say like, we need a minimum number so we can have productive meetings, so, okay. With that, I'll put an email out then this week to kind of recap where we were to all the constitutional officers, library and registrar. And then, um. Get Baker Tilly to start with organizing the first meeting, for some plan, okay, excellent. All right, um, last topic, I think, as your field is that.
Did Field Day the Penns Board has come to an agreement with John, Mindle and Emma? Um, they had Field Day to pass at their farm on three sixty. Oh, contractors signed last week, you know, we had a meeting with them this morning, they came in. County staff met with them, kind of gave them a timeline and every permit they need to make this thing happen. They actually did a very good job of giving everything else, he laid out where he wants the stuff. Everybody knows the same sheet. They are having a open house on the twentieth, they're at the farm, kind of get some community involvement and volunteers. Monday, he has a meeting with VDOT, state police and sheriff's office, traffic.
Is it going to be up that road, Circle Drive?
Will be accessed right off, right behind the parking lot.
Yeah.
But he all served it.
Ideally, that's what they're hoping to establish.
VDOT's got to give them okay on that, but things are moving, they say plan on having the event the seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth of September. So that's a good thing coming to a meeting, so I'm going to bring a lot of people.
Anything you need, anything the county needs, or we feel like we're good shape?
I think we're good shape, especially after this morning, um, they've got everything they they needed. I'm still going to work between them two if they need something to help them.
I mean, fortunately, they're, although they're new here, they've been doing this for twenty-five years. They, they know what they need, they just don't, you know, obviously they come to me, I'm sure. Procedures are a little different, but, I mean, you know, as a group, I, you know, it's all new to us, but I'm sure they can handle. I mean, they they've been dealing with the state police for twenty-plus years and VDOT twenty-plus years to have a successful event, so, you know. In my mind, I don't have any worries there, that that they can't work all of that out.
Right, but they've also been in a county with paid fire and rescue instead of volunteer.
Guchlin's, Guchlin just has, yeah, they're hybrid, they've just had paid for the last few years.
Okay.
Well, he made contact with Rescue today, so he's hoping to have a meet, this happened after a meeting. Well, he made contact with Rescue today, so he's hoping to have a meet, this happened after a meeting. Um, get with them on Monday while he's already in town meeting with VDOT, so hopefully they can come to an agreement Monday as well.
He hasn't, he hasn't told us the fire department what he wants yet, so. The biggest thing he, we met, he wanted to get his environmental stuff done for the building, the pulling track. And his building permits for the tents, his special exemptions, entertainment permits for. Maybe fireworks and just putting all the actual carnival rides and.
So when it was in Goochland, there was a lot of permanent structures. Are those now on wheels?
No.
Are they gonna leave them there year after year, or?
I think, I'm not, I don't speak the point, but I think his plans is to move some of those structures to Amelia, but not this year.
They do have to move them off of that property.
He said this year, they're not planning to permanently affix anything. Just because they don't know, even if they do decide to stay there, he said they might decide to completely rework the way they have things set up based on how this year goes. So nothing will be permanently put in the ground for this year.
They are actively fundraising to. Make those moves.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm very in favor of it. I'm quite excited. We've talked about, this has been ongoing for a long time, full fits and starts. I just want to make sure that we don't have the county bear burden of it, you know, so like. I feel like there needs to be compensation for sheriff, fire, rescue, those kind of, you know. We're gonna be, we're gonna be asking for resources for all of those, there's a cost, the county bears. That's, that's what I'll be interested in when it comes time for the permit to be asked to, for us to vote on. I'm sure he's, I mean, from the, from what they've done with other, in Goochland, my understanding is they paid for those services too, so. Not for us to profit off of it, but for, for the county not to be paying for services for an event. That's a profit event.
Well, it's gonna bring a lot of revenue into the county, so I don't even know if we have to cover costs a hundred percent, but.
I think that's debatable.
And we can bid it.
We can. They provided their numbers. There is, so there is no, no fact. Alright, uh, I don't believe we have any topics for closed session tonight. Alright. Any final, any final comments, or I'll take a motion, a motion to adjourn. Alls in favor, so I'll sign a bye. We are adjourned.